I, Samantha Spaulding, President, call this work session to order under the Open Public Meetings Act at 6:00 PM. Oh, excuse me, 6:04 PM. This is to revise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled The Open Public Meetings Act. The Running Board of Education on January 28, 2013 calls to be posted at the Barrow Hall, Running Post Office, Maryville School, Lyman Bingham School, and Grace Downing School and advertise in retrospect on February 1, 2013. A meeting notice setting forth the time, date, and location of this meeting. Roll call, board members.
Patricia Dare?
She's on her way.
Okay. Angel Beatty?
Here.
Paula Zapsen?
Naomi?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Maria Panzarella?
Here.
Patricia Smithy or?
Samantha Spaulding?
Here.
Lynn Trillo?
Here.
John Moore?
Here.
All right, the purpose, and this is new to everyone here, and I had done it in Clayton a while back. Its purpose is to be kind of informal, but it gives you the opportunity to go over all the agenda items. So that's why I put this agenda here, to review the agenda items, and we'll go through the agenda. And Samantha will direct you through the different items. And if you have any questions, this is the opportunity to ask some questions. And then the last item is, I also gave you a packet on my preliminary work for the 2013-14 budget, and that's there as well.
So if everyone can get to the revised agenda, we'll just go through that together at this time to see if we have any questions. So...
We'll make a note on the January 23 minutes. The address for Mrs. Wilson was incorrect, so I'm changing that on the minutes.
Is that what the, is that what, okay.
I like this new report for the principals' report. It's all kind of combined, and it's more condensed. I kind of, it's easier to read than for the yellow report.
Well, this is, I think you may have read in the front that it was a CUSAC recommendation from the County Business Administrator that we make some changes to our agenda. She felt that it was a little even more transparent by doing it this way. And she gave us a couple of ideas.
I like that.
So one of the things that we hope is doing was approving the fire and security drills at certain periods during the course of the year. But she felt that it was best for us to do them by the month. So this catches you up with every previous month this year. And when you have this in to approve, you're now going to be caught up to date.
So we should just go through. So let's start with, well, you know, the financial report right under minutes. So approval of minutes. Does anyone have any questions on the minutes? That is room number four. Does anyone have any questions when they review the minutes? No? Room number five is the financial report. This is just business as usual, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But the layout again is one of your...
Yes, because your format changed a little bit.
Yes, and that's from the county.
Okay.
DI as well.
Okay.
So that was my only question here.
This evening, there is a few winners, possibly only one, Mr. Iain Uche said, who's coming tonight to be recognized for their essay contest winner for the Patriots pen at the VFW. And there's a special presentation for our RTI program. There's no correspondence, because this doesn't count, correct?
Yeah.
Secretary's report is in yellow. So Joanna, that would be your report, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Right. And what the county more or less is doing now with this format is more of the items that were your secondary pages, the more important things that are in detail are now embedded in the agenda because then it becomes part of the minutes as well.
Okay.
So those things are highlighting some of the different reports that I have completed or had to complete by the end of the month. Just to go through some of those. And I'll be discussing the budget reimbursement for IDEA, amendments to IDEA and NCLB, the Medicaid cost report for the second quarter to be submitted. Then there was a special application for a national provider identifier number, which is also related to the Medicaid and SEMI requirements. The SAM registration was also a new item too because of the way everything's gone online, and you have to register. And for, this is called system for award management. So it's just another site that you have to go to and register, putting in your district information, contact information, and then discussing some of the things that were, that, you know, took up some of the time this month. PA Bell system is an item on the agenda, and CUSAC too, for the visit, for the accountability.
Any questions on that report?
Is this, no, there's no more attachment. Okay, no, I'm still, I have some questions, but not yet.
Okay. And next is the superintendent's report.
And the County Business Administrator also recommended that we do approvals on these things. So certainly the HIV report from January, you always did anyway, but we're just putting it all up into the report. And attendance and enrollment, now she recommended that it become, you know, an action item and not just an FYI type of item.
So we would need a motion to approve items A and B there during the regular meeting?
Yeah. Okay, can I make a note of that, please?
Because really, A is not required.
Oh, A is, A is an F, I put B as required. Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about anything in my report?
I have a question about the school calendar. I noticed that next April, next year's April, that the days off are the week after Easter and then a Monday and following that. Where previous years, you told me, say, Good Friday off and a full week.
This is the week going up to Easter. The reason for this is because the 28th is the first day of testing.
28th of April?
Of April.
Okay.
So if you had the Friday, which would have been the 18th, and then the whole following week, the 21st to the 25th, your students would come back to state testing on Monday.
Oh, I see, so we're getting, we're also before, gosh, okay.
A lot of districts are adjusting their calendars so that you've got students in school the week before state testing.
How about just Friday and Monday?
And that's what, with the first year I was on the board, that's what we did. Do you remember? The teachers hated it and the parents loved it. Just saying.
What are your thoughts on that? Because what are we going to here? We're going to?
The 17th.
The 17th?
Well, that was my other question too. When you are making up snow days? Right. Why, why snow days could not be made up the last three days? We're already going into that third week of June with the 16th and 17th. If they're losing days, snow days, or have to make up snow days, why can't the calendar be extended to the end of that week rather than three to six days through Easter break?
Because it seemed to me that the board interest was to try and not extend the school year due to the heat in Bingham and Downing schools. So it sort of splits the difference to have a couple of days that go no later than the 19th and then start working off. So it's sort of a compromise.
Hot Easter break now, like before you even have snow days?
Well, then, the only concern about being done so early in June, while I certainly understand the feeling about wanting to not have too many days that are really hot, you pretty much have relegated your school year to nine months if you don't go a little bit into June. If you go to just the 12th of June, for instance, with possibly going to the 13th or the, you know, if you don't go substantively into June, you're pretty much saying that June is pretty much a wash.
Well, what do you, what, currently, right now, what are grades doing this year?
They're doing like a Friday before.
So there's one week that we're wasting then, correct?
Three, three days.
Two or three days. So you're telling, so you're telling me with this calendar here, which you probably, which you don't have in front of you, grades would be due June 12th? So they'd be working all the way up to 12th? Because that's certainly not how happens in high school.
June 13th, a little different in high school. If you took off, if you did not, then it would be they work until the 6th. If you made the holiday from the 17th through the 21st, that gives you Thursday, Friday, and you have your Easter, and that Monday, and then come back, that would take you to the 13th.
I think that's actually what we did that year. Sam was Thursday, Friday, Monday. I don't know if that was much. It doesn't really matter. It's a catch 22 no matter which way you go. Because if you end the school year early, parents are still going to have to find ways to hurt their children. If you give them a break during Easter time, and then they're still, it's not enough. It's something to say, the same hour of days are going to define your children for this case regardless. Half-day for the first three days? That's the way we used to do it. Is to give the, give the kids, especially the young ones. Right. But then, but then your teacher professional days have to be made up somewhere else. Because that's the contract, that's where they get time. So we are in the school year, where do you, in the school year, do you think the teachers would need another professional day?
She doesn't have that.
No, I know, but I mean, some places do January, the Friday, the Monday weekend, where the kids live off, and teachers professional out the day.
Aren't they here anyway? Aren't they here for professional, weren't they here this past, or no?
Presidents.
Presidents, Mr. Chauvin.
They all similar to that.
Right, so January and a February long weekend for the children and professional days for the staff.
This was shown to the REA, as is our custom and is in the contract, that they get the opportunity to collaborate and give us input. They, their greater concerns had more to do with not giving, not having a one-session day the Friday before winter break.
I have, no, there's so many. They have so many one-session days in this district.
That was something I...
I'm questioning the four in December.
Mark and I collaborated, and we didn't agree.
That's conferences.
Yeah, four days for conferences.
We just talked about it in our meeting earlier, with negotiations, tweaking some of that stuff. Or having, yeah.
That stuff, that stuff could change a little bit, but also...
It could change depending on what is happening.
Listen, they're given one, they're given a one-session day. I don't, personally, I don't agree with the one-session day on Halloween. And they're given one the day before Thanksgiving. That's a Friday, and that's a full day.
But I think, from what I remember before Nancy even got here, is a lot of those half-session days were put a year before Mr. Smalley left to get ready for CUSAC thing or anything else, and then we kept them since.
Well, there's no reason why schools have to, they can't go trick-or-treating. If we're like, let's talk about it, to be honest. They can't go until 3 o'clock anyway.
They're pretty sure they are.
Why, why is it a one-session day? To be kind to teachers?
I mean, no, it's, it's, it has to do with the festivities chiefly at Bingham and Downing schools.
They're done by 11:00.
On Halloween.
Right, because the schedule's really pushed to have it done that way.
That's why.
And the thought about December 20th was the same kind of thing. If you have lunches or...
Listen, but let's remember, let me just intervene here. The festivities at Bingham and Downing will change dramatically this year, after this year's dawn. Because A, there will be a different principal in place. And B, it was always, the festivities will change drastically. Don't you agree, Sam? The festivities are...
I don't know that they will.
No.
I don't know that you can, I, well, I agree that it might be a function of administration. It's also a function of, the teachers like it that way. So administration may not choose to make that change because the teachers are comfortable with it. That's really, the board can come back and say whatever they want to say about October 31st. We didn't move on December 20th because we felt that half your party's in the afternoon.
Right. And I, and I agree, because you should be doing language arts and math in the morning.
Exactly.
Right? Here's an example, the 5th and the 6th of September are...
But also, and to back up, after your parties, you will not be able to get the new parties with floating stamp completed in an afternoon.
If the structure is scheduled away, yeah.
Exactly. It will work. Because the half-day is a longer day. In order, in order for special area teachers to be able to facilitate their parties, celebrations, it has to happen within the course of a half-day, which is a longer period of time than a morning and then an afternoon. So that's another mindset, it's just another thing to think about, that's all.
I think there's some questions.
Yeah, that's all, it's just another thing to think about.
Well, like if I'm looking at, if I'm looking at this, I'm thinking the 5th and the 6th are half-days for courtesy. Right, what are the three half-days for, September 5th and 6th?
Again, that's from, from my mindset as an elementary educator, those two days, those two half-days for the lower elementary ed is to get those children in and get them used to where they are, what's happening, to get lunch programs, situations squared away. When I was teaching, those first two days, I did nothing but seat children for lunch.
But they don't even have, they don't even serve lunch until the first day of the school year.
No, they don't. No, but it's a, it's a time for the children to get acclimated and adjusted to what the full day schedule will be like when they start fresh on Monday. It's also, it's also, you know, you're coming in the latter part of a week, and you're giving kids things to do, and it's like, what's going, I don't understand. So it's an adjustment period for the elementary kids. That was the mindset back when this was developed this way.
I understand, because, you know, I still have a little guy.
Sure.
But if I'm just thinking, as I'm putting a board member hat on, 5th and 6th, then in October, the 31st, then in November, the 27th. And then in June, the 13th, 16th, and 17th.
And in March, 13th and 14th?
Well, that's for conferences, so there's a purpose there. And then they only have two conference days in March because not everybody comes in, correct? That's only for people who need an additional conference. So there's four days in December because they, is that in their contract?
No.
It's in there right now because there is nothing in the contract about evening conferences. So if the board negotiations negotiates evening conferences and can do it in three days, for instance, because of evening conferences, that can change. But it's not in the contract.
It's not yet, okay. So possibly this could, this could be reduced here.
You want to, you want to be able to provide some one-session days for staff professional development, I think. Because it's an opportunity for, for you to do professional learning communities. It's an opportunity, and they, and they use them.
Yeah.
To review data, to make plans.
On November 27th, they stay after school until 3 o'clock?
No, but I've never worked in a school district that doesn't have a half-day before Thanksgiving. That doesn't have half-day.
Or Christmas. No, neither. I just feel, I just feel like I'm fortunate, but not everybody is in the same situation. And I think that some of the half-session days are unwarranted.
I think the opinion of both the parents who, because most parents don't have a half-session day the day before Thanksgiving.
Here's what I'm just going to throw out there. And I'm not, I am not meant waiting for this calendar. It is not my calendar. And I am not going to do anything with this calendar. But I just would like to remind the board that you're entering into negotiations for a new contract. And you have to think about what capital you want to expend in negotiations with a bargaining unit coming up. So if you want to expend capital, I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just being the voice of, if you want to expend capital on taking a harder line with the calendar, then maybe some of the things that the negotiations committee talked about tonight would not be. You know what I mean? It would, if you put out everything that we discussed and this, going back to some things that you're now suggesting, you're going to have a lot to work with.
Well, with, I understand and appreciate that comment. However, with the new Common Core standards and the rigor that is involved in instruction, because that's why we're here, to educate our children, they need as much time in the classroom as possible.
I agree.
So maybe we'll table this and have some discussions and think as a board what everyone's thoughts are and come back and approve a final calendar next month.
And I think the negotiations committee should communicate regarding goals of negotiations and the impact that it could potentially have on the calendar that you want to put out there.
Okay.
Okay, the attachment on the, for your CUSAC registered goals. Under board goal number two, it talked about providing assessment for student growth. But I didn't, maybe I just missed it. I didn't see anything specific as far as what model we use for assessment. Is it supposed to be in this hall report? Or is it supposed to be... Row-based, attachment X4, X point four, the second page, board goal number two.
This is benchmark assessments. So the benchmark assessments are the assessment for student growth that's used for formative as well as summative assessments.
Right.
We are in the process of developing that. So you can, when you take a look at the activities, provide training in the formation of benchmarks.
Okay.
Meet committees to establish common benchmarks and metrics. And benchmarks will be used and correlated to student performance on state and standardized assessments and revised as necessary.
Okay.
So it's really just rolling out benchmark assessments that teachers are developing.
The reason my question was because back, I think it was similar assessment, there was actually a model that was being used. Well, maybe I missed something here, maybe it's just, but, okay. So this is just basically our developmental stage, as you're saying.
This is to develop, to develop, because the goal is to provide those benchmarks. The objective is to, is to provide an assessment for student growth, formative and summative. The objective is how are you going to accomplish that? And that's by developing benchmark assessments for each grade and subject area. And it's a two-year goal.
So once the benchmark assessment goals are in place, then assessment models will be implemented? Or will they be, how, how exactly, how exactly are we planning on measuring student growth here?
Via the development of benchmark assessments.
Right, and once those assessments are developed, then we have to search for the tools we're going to use for this.
No, they're, no, you, no, because you develop benchmark assessments, and you say, for instance, you expect the students of your, of that grade to be at a certain level. So for instance, it would be developing a goal of 75% of the students will attain 80, 90% proficiency on timed mathematics tests in addition to subtraction by the end of the term.
So their timed mathematics tests are part of the testing that's used within the materials they're using in that typical curriculum?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And also, just board goal number four, talked about, this is supervisory student, you know, student performance assessments. Talked about SMART goals. What's, what is that acronym for SMART?
Specific, Measurable, Attainable, Reliable, and Time-bound. Those, these, this new acronym is being used by the Department of Education and the new ESEA.
Okay, specific, measurable?
Measurable, attainable.
Okay.
Realistic, and time-bound.
Okay, thanks.
And that's what everybody did, that's what the principals did.
Okay. Just loving Sackham.
We live in alphabet.
I have really...
The schools are the worst.
Oh, telling you.
It's even, we're awful, we're awful.
Attain.
All the regular education teachers always say, what? Hold on, hold on, I don't understand what you just said.
Well, I told Nisi, when I first came on board, she was here, I said, I need a dictionary for all these acronyms and what they need. It's like, it's awful.
I'm sorry, I should have...
You need an app, you mean.
You need a...
Yeah, you have to have that. How bad is that?
I believe it's...
So next, yeah, that's helpful. The next are the principals' report, nurses' report, buildings and grounds, special education report. Any issues with any of them?
No, I just had a question for Mark. Since you're here, this is perfect. Talk about your study hall program for eighth grade students who are in jeopardy.
Kids were, we identified kids since the end of the first March period. We've got multiple subjects. We told about certain students the last few years that are struggling. And originally, we sent out, you know, kind of made it for the parents, not mandatory, but we highly recommend they come to the first round of conferences. After the progress reports were sent out the second semester, we identified Mr. Beta, Mr. Mungo, myself. I identified a list of kids that were still not performing, in jeopardy of not graduating. And also, with graduation comes all the other things that you are here at this building. So instead of going to the lunchroom, they go to the lunchroom, pick up their stuff. We use the old home ec room, which thankfully, maintenance did a great job cleaning out for us this year. So it's now usable again. So we have desks set up in there. And Mr. Mungo, Mrs. Beta take those kids for the 45-minute lunch, plus the 23-minute advisory. And there's usually a specific day of what they work on. Like two days might be social studies if they're behind that. One day might be math, some kids are working on different things. And that's what we're trying to, so they have a solid hour. And they're allowed to eat. But it's for the students that, when they leave this building, really are...
Okay, you answered my question. I was just wondering how it'd fit into the day, but you, and how often is it?
It's every day.
Every day, yeah.
I had them today, and I sat there with my computer. And some of the kids are pulling their grades up, some of the kids still, you know. The hour's not enough time. Because they're big themselves, so.
Now, do you feel that maybe after the first semester, that this program could go into effect next year?
It's probably going to be something we're going to need to...
Okay. I think it's a great idea.
Schedule a teacher, monitor that.
Sure.
Because it's very difficult for Mr. Mungo and myself to do it. Because it's during the lunch period where sometimes we have problems with a little school lunch. So we're calling away to do that.
Right.
Mrs. Beta's been great working with us and communicating. And she actually has a fifth period as well. She has a smaller handful of students that she's working with. So we're trying, just so we're not leaving anybody hanging. And parents are aware of the whole process. This week, they've had academic hearings with every parent on that, with every student on that list. We invite the parent to commit.
And what's your population of kids that you, right now, are still struggling?
There's a, there's probably 15 to 18 kids.
All right, so we have to just move a little bit quickly. I don't want to stop anyone from answering questions, but Joanna does want to, does have a budget presentation for us. So I want to get, does anyone have any issues on their property and transportation?
I just had a question on if there's any progress on the Bingham sewer problem. We had a report from Butch that they snaped, not cleared. They need Northeast Mechanical to come. They did a video scope and were waiting for the analysis.
Yeah, well, they had cleared it out from debris that was in there. And they did the scope, but I don't think he got the final report yet on that. I believe part of the problem was, I think, just the drainage itself and the elevation. But I don't want to comment on something that might be incorrect. And I don't know if the elevation difference is, is causing the problem or something else was causing the problem. But I do know that what they did pull out was sanitary progress again. So it's probably not.
Okay. So do we need to ask Butch this tonight if he has a problem?
He, he's taking his final exam in the second class tonight.
Okay, so he won't see them.
Yeah, he's got one left, and he'll be finished with the last one.
All right, well, you can make a note for him. So give us an update for next meeting, that'd be great, thanks.
Okay. On property and transportation, any issues on the reports? Any issues on their property and transportation?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, because I didn't ask if there was any other questions for the reports. If not, how about personnel, B?
If not, how about finance, C?
Number three, the paging bell system was in the budget. We're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Money's in the budget. I'm asking the county to approve a transfer.
Okay.
In order to accommodate that.
Okay. Okay, that's number four. Curriculum is B. So it looks like we're good and with A, B, C, and D?
Yeah, I have a question about D.
Okay.
How about destruction during suspension? Do we have a policy as far as?
Requirement.
Yeah.
For, how long is the suspension for? Is it a one, probable duration was one week? Is that, is that how it works? The bar looks like a timeframe, a child, that a child is suspended from school? I just, I couldn't remember whether we had a policy on this or not.
That, that is actually a legal requirement for this particular student.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Concerns, issues? If not, Joanne put a packet in front of us with a, with a note, because she is going to discuss the preliminary budget. So whenever you're ready.
Okay. Yeah, I gave a little synopsis. I put that together actually yesterday. And I was working on some of the, the handouts or the spreadsheets that were going with that this afternoon. I'm kind of, I'm happy to be able to present this preliminary budget for you. What you'll see in the sheets is the revenue pages, the first two that describe out the, the money that we'll be utilizing in our two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget. And my focus here, because we have surplus to be put into the budget, is to focus on one-time, one-time type expenses specifically are facilities. And because you don't want to rely on always having surplus to utilize other than your two percent cap in order to fund your operations for your school districts and maintain your buildings. So some of the highlights, actually, if you want a quick look at the very last page, some of the highlights in here that I put in there, of course, the county is going to have to approve it. And it's a long process, and there's a new software program that everyone's dealing with this year. They've actually gotten rid of the old DOS, state program for the budget, and it's all online. And there's been a lot of changes to it, and the whole format is all different. But some of the big highlights here is to be able to put air conditioning units at Bingham School, air conditioning units at Downing School.
All the kids can go to school all month of the year. Retract everything we just said about the schedule. It's all right. Make it go year-round now.
Now, this is a big project, so exactly the time out.
Yeah, it's not going to happen everybody.
Are air conditioning units like in windows or?
Wall, they're all over the wall.
Oh, the kind of the wall? Okay.
Isn't that exciting?
They were cold when you sit right next to it and it comes down.
Freezing. And also, in order to accommodate that too, you know, obviously, there's going to be some increase in our electrical usage as well. Put that in there. But actually, the next one is Downing School would have to have some upgraded electricity capacity, some, a sub panel put in. So that's in there as well.
Now, is there a sub panel thing already? It's that, there, when that addition put in, they put that sub panel on right?
Their, yeah, their capacity is fine right there. And this is, we should, we should give a shout out to Butch who did the research on this. Which, you hired somebody with HVAC experience, and he did the research and found a product that is much more cost-effective than anything that we'd ever seen before. So he and Joanne have been in discussion about this for a while.
An air conditioning unit product or, okay, okay.
And it's, it's really the most efficient way to go with the age of the buildings as well, to do something like that. In addition to that, what I wanted to put in here too was, in order to resolve the county and the DOE always being honest about our food service program, to renovate the home economics room into a functional kitchen, so that we can actually eliminate that middle man.
Derek, this is probably Hallmark.
Now, what are we going to do?
Oh, I'm all about that then. We know how I feel about that.
Well, and, and.
I was thinking about that when we were met the goals.
Yeah.
Whatever, where'd that go?
And, and.
Huge.
I had to keep this a secret for like a week, all of this exciting news. And I did, I did ask Nancy and Mark, you know, about that. You know, because I know that there's a, there's a, a struggle, a lot of struggling students in eighth grade, and there were some rooms that aren't used every period. So, so Mr. Onyuge said that, you know, that he could rearrange that. And also, I want to keep in mind, because a lot of people were concerned about classroom space. I just want to remind everybody that, you know, with all the new housing going up, we had our own demographer, you know, Garrison had a demographer come out and look for us. And it was only one or two, two students possibly per grade. So it wouldn't be like that we needed to have, hold on to that classroom there for the future with all those houses being built.
So that won't be an issue either.
That's good news. That'd be as exciting news.
Okay, and then going on, also, in the budget is to get moving on the fire doors at our, actually both schools. I'm hoping to get started on Bingham actually this year before the end of June, because the fire marshal has been bringing that up in his inspections. So it's, it's new code, and in order to bring it up to the current file, fire codes, they want us to replace the, the doors in the stairways that have the transom windows into fire doors. And so I want to continue with that.
What do those doors look like, Joanne? Are they, are they solid doors? Are they no glass? You're talking about nothing, no glass whatsoever or not?
No, the doors can have glass in them, but what's, what'll be different is the fact that you, the, the bar, the transom at the top will be eliminated.
Okay.
And I believe too, the middle bar between the doors as well.
Yes.
And then the doors themselves, they have to be fireproof. Because it has to be a barrier in case there's fire to, to prevent it.
Well, they're not up to the new code. And what they're saying.
The door's supposed to be able to hold back the heat, like two minutes, four minutes.
Right, yes, right, okay.
You're talking about the door, where you guys go up the steps every room?
All the sets of doors.
The exterior doors. When you go in the hallway, when you go down the hallway, I mean, they're everywhere. They're everywhere, staircase, every floor.
So I'm going to assume. I'm going to assume that they're mostly solid doors, like maybe just like a little bit of glass in it. Now, just security-wise, now when people come in, it won't be as easy to stay from the hallway downstairs who just walked in. They'll be a little more secluded when you first walk in that door.
So what's the maximum width of window panes?
Which area you're talking to. I don't have a, this, this.
Well, I, right, but I think what Amy's trying to say is, for safety reasons for our people in the building, whatever, the widest width glass we can possibly put in this area are all the doors. For security reasons, to know who is entering, exiting, and where those children are going. And also height too, with the elementary schools, you have to watch the height of the doors. Because you have little ones that are barely coming up to where that, that midway coin is on a door. And if you have a little one standing there, if someone's trying to push out, they're going to hurt. Even though those awful less doors are a concern too. But that's just something to keep in mind. I think nothing else to do.
And exterior maintenance too, of our older buildings too, is, in this case, I'm thinking about pointing, some pointing work that has to be done on the, the bricks. Maintenance equipment, curriculum instruction position, you guys have talked about that. A mobile disabilities class here at, at Boltz, we want to ensure that we have a classroom aid for that. Allowing for benefit cost increases, which is estimated to be at least ten percent. The increase in utilities due to the increase in air conditioning units. And then your technology and capital investments in technology will be in year two or three on the lease with the six iPad carts that we obtained this year. And then I also allow for an additional lease for purchase of two more iPad carts as well. And then some more of the, trying to just keep up with upgrading and maintaining our technology here in the schools. So those are the, the big highlights there. And the other sheets is the breakdown of the, the revenue, comparing it from this year to the preliminary numbers for thirteen, fourteen. And the first sheet is the, like an overview. The second sheet breaks down, if you had any questions on what goes into the other revenue or state aid. So it just breaks down in detail, where you see some of those totals on the first sheet. And then the stapled section, here's the stapled, is the appropriations for current year, the prior year as from the result of the audit, and also the preliminary numbers for thirteen, fourteen. And then, as of, up until three thirty today, as far as the tax impact was concerned, I, I didn't have any new information for, to use. So what I originally assumed was using the same ratable numbers as last year and the same average assessment. So I actually have two sets in here for tax comparisons by school year. One utilizing last year's and then the other one utilizing the information that Rich just brought over to me around three thirty today. And either one is not a bad situation at all. And again, because, and the reason it is that way is because the split tax year, and the way the property taxes are calculating using the split, like we're on a fiscal year and property taxes are on the calendar year. So we're going to, again, have the benefit of the elimination of the debt service portion of the total tax bill for the thirteen, fourteen tax impact. But just to, to give you a comparison here, using last year's ratables number, which was three hundred thirty-five million, two fifty-four, two thirty-five, and putting in my proposed tax levy, which, and here it's the six million, six hundred and thirty thousand, which is one, a one point nine seven percent increase, just under the two percent, because I like round numbers, so I counted it to six million, six hundred and thirty thousand. That actually came out to as far as a tax impact of a penny increase, which on last year's average resident value, which was only ninety-nine thousand, two forty-one, you were talking about an average increase for the average assessed value of just under ten dollars for the year. But with Rich's information that he just brought me this, like this afternoon, he told me that they have the new assessment values. So the new assessment values actually increased the total residential portion to three hundred eighty-one million, five hundred eleven thousand, four hundred dollars. And by taking that large, that increased assessment, that now winds up being a tax decrease.
Wow.
Twenty-two cents. Now, on the flip side too though, your average assessed value has now increased. So it's, the average assessed value is now one hundred and forty-seven thousand, eighteen dollars as compared to the ninety-nine, two forty-one. So even so, and taking that, you'll see that the average assessed value homeowner will now see a decrease of three hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-four cents. So I think it's a.
When you did this one, did you do it based along the ratable that he gave you? Because the ratable's supposed to change as well?
Yes.
Okay, so you switched the ratable along with the assessed value?
Yeah, so this one goes with the increased one, yeah. And then.
Just keep talking, it's all good news.
Oh, and then the, and again, this is based on flat funding. Nancy and I both listened to the governor yesterday. And, you know, what you can pull out of the general statements is the fact that, from what he said, three hundred and some districts would see an increase in their stating. The rest would not see a decrease, would stay the same. So my assumptions obviously are flat funding, because I don't know, because he says, you know, the funding formula, what goes into the formula is going to stay, stay the same or something to that effect. But you don't know within your districts if there's going to be changes that is going to change that in any way. So worst-case scenario, I'm assuming flat funding. So I think we're in a good spot for the thirteen, fourteen school year.
Nice.
And I, I, yes, we're, and.
You took the word out loud.
Could you say a little, could you say a little now, please?
I think the board is, is, is going to be able to demonstrate to the community that you know how to save money and preserve your capital asset, and you're going to have some wonderful improvements in your capital projects. And I think the community's really going to appreciate it.
Without having to rely on a bond referendum, which the SDA is not coming through with money, and we're still waiting on reimbursing it from the last project. And the bond referendums around here are not, Nancy?
Well, yeah, because Nancy and I had met and talked about possibly going. We, we met with Council President Nick Capodice about possibly going out for a bond referendum for quite a few of these things that are important to our community and to parents who are moving into this community with small children. So now we can say, we don't need to do that, we're going to do it without a bond referendum. And maybe in three, five years, we have to go out for a bond referendum for some other things.
Three hundred and eighty-three dollar savings now, so that a couple years you don't have to, that's fine.
But, um, thank you, Joanne, for all your help.
Thank you. Thank you for your very good news.
It's much easier to give than bad news.
Present this to the public at Gambler.
Yeah, March twenty-third. The other thing that's on the agenda is to have, the board needs to hold a special meeting to approve. Because I have to have this submitted in final form, online, uploaded to the state and the county. By March seventh is our deadline. So in our agenda is a request for a special meeting on March sixth to, because I'll have to go, the numbers finalized, and I have to submit a, a formal request for you to approve me to submit the budget to the state. So that's on the agenda.
So that's next. Next Wednesday.
Yes.
We need a forum. One.
Wait, what?
Six thirty.
I can do six thirty if it's quick. I don't need it.
It's a quick, it'll be quick. Six thirty, yes, 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 Angel, yes.
Sorry, say that to me.
Six, March sixth, next Wednesday, Patty and John, yes?
I'm good.
Can you come in uniform and give me a hand?
Katie, walk in, say yes.
It's going to be March sixth.
Our next one is like, oh, you come for that.
Did you say six thirty? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I can tell you that, no, not a hearing, it's a quick five, it's a quick five-minute.
Board approves invited to be.
Board approves it.
Yes, I, I'll make, I'll.
I'll make it too. I do have something popping up on my calendar, but it'll have to wait. One, two, three, four, five. We have five. That's all right. Okay, so at this time, can we, can we raise to use the restroom? And we'll start our regular meeting in about nine minutes. Meeting's called to order. The Runway Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with chapter two thirty-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The, the time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as post notices of error of all. Runway Post Office, Mary Bold School, Lime Bayland School, Gray Stanning School, and the Runway Public School District website. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call board members.
Patricia there?
Here.
Angel Bebe?
Here.
Charles is absent. Naomi Davidson?
Here.
Maria Panzarella?
Here.
Patricia Smith?
Here.
Samantha Spalding?
Here.
Lynn Chirrow?
Here.
And John Ward?
Here.
Each present or absent?
Also present Dr. Nancy Ward, Superintendent of the Schools, Joanne Augustine, Business Administrator, Maria Gallagher, Principal of Bingham and Downing. Marie Gallagher, Principal of Bangam and Downing Schools, Martha Yen, Chief Principal, Marygold School, Jenna Fiola, Child Study Team Coordinator. And that's all at this time. First...
We're gonna approve the minutes first, with the followers, right?
Okay. First off, I need a motion to approve the following meeting minutes. January twenty-third, regular meeting, January twenty-third, executive, January twenty-eighth, special meeting, January twenty-eighth, executive session, and February fifth, special meeting.
I need a motion to approve the next round.
Motion made by Maria.
Second that motion.
Seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Patricia Deere?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Chirillo?
Yes.
And John Ward? Motion carries eight zero.
Under financial report, I need a motion to approve items A through D. Motion made by Angel, seconded by Maria. Any further questions? Roll call.
Patricia Deere?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Chirillo?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, this evening, we have two presentations. First off, we would like to recognize... I can help you, yes. The VFW Patriots Pen Award winners. This evening, we only have the second-place award winner with us, John Hallahan.
My name is Darcey, she's a teacher, Mrs. Searle, she joins us tonight, and she has done a great job organizing this, having the kids work on it for her class period one day. And John was one of the three finalists, did a great job. We'd like for him to read his presentation, or his paper tonight as part of the presentation.
John received a second-place fifty-dollar award from the Runnymede VFW, and he had to answer the question, what would he tell the founding fathers of America if he could talk to them? John, would you like to stand up and read it? I know you already did this once, but you wanna come right up here? Why don't you say it right there? That's perfect.
Eleven score and sixteen years ago, our fathers brought forth our content in new nation, conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal. And as of time span from seventeen seventy-six to today, that took our America to grow this large. We are superpower in this world and color. The key fathers of this nation are our spouses, John Adams, Benjamin Franklin, Alexander Hamilton, Thomas Jefferson, James Madison, and George Washington. Those men twisted and molded and shaped this nation into what it is now at this age of time. All of these men have, have the historical significance to America. If I had a chance to sit down and talk with those great men, what would I tell them? First off, Thomas Jefferson and John Adams, you are the voice of the independence. Without ideas and common sense of you two men, there most, there would most, no, there most likely would not be the United States of America today. George Washington, you are the first block of all of them that were used to build this nation. Your courageousness in the Revolutionary War helped us pull away from Britain and finally have the independence we are seeking for. Benjamin Franklin, your inventions changed America and the world too. Electricity, glasses, and elaborate, just a few examples. Alexander Hamilton, your idea of the treasury shaped our nation's economy towards its today. James Madison, you are probably one of the most important men who ever set fire to America. As the author of Constitution and the Bill of Rights, you shaped the government and how it works. See, I'll close with that, I would say. Thank you, I can't find the words to express my gratitude for what you've done. You created the greatest nation in history of mankind. You risked your lives, your fortunes, and your sacred honor to do it. This nation, long after you're gone, will do amazing things, like fighting and winning two major world wars. Putting twelve men on the moon, explaining to Adam, rest for eternity knowing that the country you created became the shot city on the hill. The beacon of hope for all mankind. People from every corner of the globe came here to live in freedom and escape the tyranny of government. Thank you.
So again, the Board of Education would just like to recognize John and congratulate him on his award, and also Mrs. Searle for your dedication to helping out the Ladies Auxiliary for the Runnymede VFW. Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry.
Congratulations to you as well.
Well, it's not easy getting up and speaking in front of people, and John did it twice, where else? He, he presented to the veterans last month, and the Ladies Auxiliary members at the VFW, and actually, he actually met his, his history teacher for next year. And if you go onto the Black Horse Bike Regional School District website, there's some pictures up there. And channel nineteen, I'm trying, I haven't heard back, but I'm trying to get it on channel nineteen as well, so. Congratulations again, John. And next up, we are having a special presentation on our literacy intervention and RTI programs. For those of you, I'm sure everybody knows Marie Gallagher, but I'm not sure that everybody knows everybody else. Lori Heinz is our learning disabilities teacher consultant, and she works with, not only on the child study team as a case manager and a learning consultant, but she also is an intervention specialist with our students, Barb Epstein, is, has been working with us as a consultant. This is her second year, and she works with our, once again, our students who, in literacy interventions and even mathematics interventions, I probably can't even list all the things that Barb has done for our teachers and our students over the last two years. She's a wealth of knowledge and information, and she has been instrumental in transforming some of the practices in our district to the benefit of our students. Jenna Posonella has been with us for a number of years, and she was a first-grade teacher. However, Jenna became a reading specialist, and this is now her second year working with students at Bangam and Downing Schools. And every year, she adds more knowledge and skill to the, to what she already knows about helping students who are struggling with literacy. So this team has put together a response to intervention program in Runnymede, and I know that's a question that's out there in everybody's minds, so we wanted to give you an opportunity to see what they do and how it works here. Thank you, ladies.
Okay, this is my slide, and after that, I'm gonna turn it over. Why have we moved to the RTI model? Well, basically, we, from the time I've been in Runnymede, which is eighteen years now, we've had basic skills. And basic skills, we did the best we could with basic skills. We had some great teachers teaching basic skills, but we didn't have the staff we needed to really do what we needed to do. And basically, with basic skills, we pulled out twice a week, and sometimes we pushed in instead of pulling out. Once we started diet reading, we moved more to a push-in model, where the basic skills teacher would go into the classroom during the reading lesson and take the low group an extra two times a week, so that the teacher would also take them, and then they would get two more days of reading. But basically, we did not have either the time with the children or the right materials to do the kinds of things we, we know now that we needed to do, now that we see what we can do with the right materials and with the right time. So we were focusing on remediation, we were mainly using what the teachers were using in the classroom, but working with the children in smaller groups. And we were attempting to, to help them pick up where they were struggling. And it was not totally unsuccessful, but many of the children remained in basic skills from kindergarten to first grade, to second grade, to third grade. And then I would see them in fourth grade, and fifth grade, and sixth grade, still in basic skills. They remained in basic skills their entire careers. With the RTI model, we are attempting to actually get them where they belong when they're in the primary grades. And we have had some great success, which you will see. And it's basically set up differently, which they're going to describe to you, and we have the right kinds of materials to do it with now. So it's really been helpful, and we're hoping that we can keep it moving, that we can, we've already moved some of the children out. It's an eighteen-week program, this LLI that Jenna's working with. And at the end of the eighteen weeks, which just, just happened, we've already been able to move some of the children out, already, in the first round. So we are finding some really nice success with it. And if, this is nothing against what we've done all these years, we're still doing it with math, because we don't have the personnel or the materials to do anything differently. But we now, with reading, do have a different way, and they're going to tell you about it. Okay, so I'll turn it over to the experts.
What is the response to intervention model? It's an assessment intervention model, which means that we assess kids, and we base the instruction based on that assessment. And it allows schools to really deliver instructions so kids don't fall through the cracks. What Marie, the cracks, what Marie said is that, you know, the kids remain in remediation and basic skills. So what happens is this gap keeps widening. So your second grader who can't read becomes a third grader that can't read, becomes a fourth grader, becomes a seventh grader that's disgusted with reading. And maybe even a high school dropout, and certainly not a college goer. And, you know, in this global economy, you wanna make your kids as competitive as possible. So the idea of response to intervention is to close the gap, to close the gap and to close it early. And that's why it's more of a prevention. The key word, I thought, well, it's a key word that really makes me, you know, you walk away with one word that you think about, it's targeted. It's targeted instruction to expertly manage each child's needs. And that target is the key, because you're hitting, it's like you're hitting the bullseye. You just wanna reach the point, and you, and if that child needs fluency, you're not going for comprehension, you're going with fluency till that child meets that, and you're, you're assessing as you go. It's a systematic way to get most kids to read a grade level in the general education classroom. It's like a philosophy. I, I don't think anybody here would not support that philosophy, that you want kids to read on grade level, and you want them to compete, and that is the way to do it. RTI, at its core, at its core, this is the basic core, is a four-step procedure for correcting the potential problem. The first is to identify the problem. So you're, if a first grader who calls out inappropriately in class, or it could be your seventh grader is not doing the homework. Problem identified, child is calling out in class inappropriately. Teacher intervene aggressively, makes up a star chart with positive, you know, rewards, reinforcement, add star stickers. Monitor progress, calls the parent, lets the parent, no, over a course of maybe a few weeks, how's this intervention working, how's little Johnny doing? And that's the monitoring of progress. And then adjusting the intervention after a few weeks. It's not working, what do we do? Beef it up, intensify, and change. Don't keep with the same thing that's not working and do it longer. Constantly monitor and assess effectiveness. That's a key component of the RTI. And my favorite part is that it's, poor student performance is not the failure, is not failure. It's not teacher failure, student failure, it's intervention failure. And if you are sick and you go to the doctor, and the doctor recommends, of course, a treatment, a drug, the drug's not working. It's not really the doctor's fault, and it is not really the patient's fault either. It's the intervention fault. It didn't achieve the desired result. What it was supposed to do, it didn't do. So do you stay on it longer? Do you just go off it? Do you try another intervention? That again targets exactly what the problem is. And within RTI, you know, there are three tiers, and I'll guess.
And different RTI models have different levels of tiers, but we definitely have a three-tier leveling system here in Runnymede. And the, how the tiers go is, the first tier is the least intensive. So the first tier is happening in the general education classroom. It's happening with the general education teachers. It's pooling, you know, that child that needed extra help with comprehension. She's taking a group of kids with comprehension issues and working on targeted comprehension strategies. She's working with, we have, we're, we're doing a lot with the Daily Five, which is a really great way, it's actually helping to improve kids' desire and pleasure in reading. And it's, they're guiding themselves, they're working in peer partners, they're asking each other about what they like about the books. They can be reading on different levels or the same book at a time, they're listening to each other read. And this is becoming a common practice in our elementary schools. That could be part of the tier one intervention. There could be guided reading, structured lessons, that you probably have heard some of the kids say, oh, I'm on level K, I'm on level J, working with those types of interventions. They're really in the general education classroom, that's where a lot of coaching's happening, and the teachers are carrying through with those interventions. Tier two interventions are more intensive. They are the three-time-a-week, maybe pull out for thirty minutes to really target fluency, because what we were giving in just the general ed is not cutting it. They're, they're still struggling with that skill. So we have interventionists that'll work with that student maybe three times a week. Still remaining in class for the bulk of their reading instruction, but they're getting some targeted intervention. That could be, even we have wholesome foundations throughout the district, which is a wonderful program. The intervention piece of that, there's something that they're just not getting through those daily drill, that daily lesson, that they could be getting from the tier two. Okay? And then when all else fails, and all this is given time, so we, we give weeks' time, we come back and say, how are they doing? Where's, what's the benchmarking look like? How are they making progress? And if they're not, then they would move to tier three. And we do have kids that move, and this is like ten percent, roughly, ten percent of your population is here working on those intensive skills. Now, this is a five-day-a-week, how it looks in our schools right now is, five days a week, an interventionist would come in, would work with that student in very concentrated, targeted groups. Everybody's on the same level, they're working on the skills, and she's working with them every day on the skills that they're weak on. And that's all being tracked, that progress is being tracked, and every week, they're being assessed of how much they're growing. And this is where we were talking about students that are moving out of the RTI, because they, that worked.
Is that a thirty-minute time slot as well, five times a week?
It's thirty minutes, some has forty-five, depending on...
It depends on the grade level, right? Yeah, first and second is five days a week, thirty minutes. Kindergarten's three days a week, thirty minutes. And third grade is three times a week, forty-five minutes.
But the tier two is only two times a week, unfortunately. Right, and then there's some, well, I have, we have some kids that...
Unfortunately because of time allotment, or unfortunately because of staff? Not with staff, okay, okay.
And so this is how the setup works. And kids are placed in tiers depending on what their needs are. So we try the first tier first, if that doesn't work, and all this is being monitored. So we have the data showing that they're just not responding to this intervention. So what happens if students don't show adequate progress in tier three, which was our maximum tier, that's when we know, hey, there may be a disability, there may be a problem here that we need to address, and we need to make modifications for accommodations. They may need more specialized instruction in a resource room, in a smaller group setting. That is when we would look to, of course, you know, the child study team referral. But if RTI works and, and kids avoid special education, it's not really avoiding special education, it's addressing the areas, everybody has areas of strengths and weaknesses. It's addressing those areas of weaknesses and making them areas where they can compete with other kids on an equal playing field. Not everybody has to be on, you know, considered special ed for that. But of course, if we get to third grade and we still, you know, are having issue, I mean, you're gonna have that, but... So this is our district child study team referrals by the year. And I kinda just started out this, you know, roughly. This is when we started kind of adopting the RTI model and the shift to this year. And you see a gradual decrease because teachers have access to tiered interventions to help these kids. They have access to the programs, to the foundations, to the Read Naturally, to the LLI. They have all those access to those programs. So they have something to help the kids instead of looking, you know, to the child studying to say, they're not cutting it, we need help. So you're, we're seeing a gradual decrease. The red lines are K to two, the other grades are the blue, and you're seeing a gradual decrease. And also in this slide, there is consideration for parent referrals. When a parent referred to child, child study team, regardless if the staff referred them, I mean, they're always gonna have parent referrals. So this year, we had seven referrals to the child study team in just K to two. And four of them were parent referrals and three were staff referrals, so far this year. Last year, we had fourteen referrals, half were staff and half were parent. So you can see that, you know, the staff... So you can see that, you know, the staff have other options and other means to go to to help remedy skills before considering returning the child study team.
So when we're trying to figure out the students that need help, we have a couple of different options. And in the past, we've been doing the map testing on the computer. And for the past few years, we've been doing DIBELS. And that gives us some good information. DIBELS tells us about our kids' K-one phonics abilities and grades two and three that are reading fluency. But now this year, we started with the benchmark assessment system. And this gives us an overall view of how every single child can read and what level they can read at. It was a huge undertaking at the beginning of the year. For two weeks, we had subs come in and kind of rotate through the classes so the teachers could go out. And all the feedback from all the teachers was so positive because they said, I got to sit with every single student, find their reading strengths, find their reading weaknesses and find their reading level. So when they go back into the classroom, they could do their guided reading groups and kids were grouped the right way. They knew what strengths, that there was our, there's our target right there. We knew what to target. And especially for the, in terms of support, we knew which kids really needed that extra support. This gave clearly, we could say who needed that extra support. And so what we have for those students, those most needy students in reading is the Level Literacy Intervention. And so this is what I, this is me every day doing this. And I have to say, it's been, it's so exciting.
Can I just say that the Board of Education sent Janet and Barbara, might as well down to North Carolina this summer to be trained in this. So that was, this is the results of that investment.
And we brought it back and opened the beginning of the year. So the teachers, the first couple of days of school, had all of this expertise so that from get-go, they, they had instruction and coaching. And in the spring, we had teachers come in on their own for two to three days in June, like a week after school, and that wasn't easy. And that worked. And we made it fun. And, and we taught them how to use the assessment. Because if you're not familiar with the assessment, you're going in cold. I mean, that's not worth it. So that's, that was because.
Isn't that how you use the half-days and the first two days of school? Yes, I do some teaching and helping our teachers to learn how to use it.
And she's continuing to do that, like she's starting now with the kindergarten teachers.
And now, yeah, and with the LLI now, we have kindergarten teachers that have said, you know, our students really need help, what can we do? And so we've been able to work together and they're taking the initiative and bringing it into their classrooms too. So right now, you're saying it's first through third grade is what you're working this year? This year. Fully kindergarten, will join me? I had a truth.
They started.
They started, yeah. But we started, um, we, we assessed the kindergarten in Ju, in January. And then I was able to pick up a group there and the teachers picked up some groups doing this intervention too. So, and we've noticed, we, we realized then, this is where we need some extra help. So it became very apparent to us. But the LLI, I mean, the LLI, LLI program is intense. It's structured. It hits all the parts of the reading that kids need. It's thirty-minute scaling, personnel-wise, I can only do three days a week at each school with the kindergarten. But it's so motivating. I mean, I have kids that when I say, okay, it's time for our new book, they literally cheer. These are struggling readers who generally don't like to read. And they're like, what's, what's our next book? I'm so excited for it.
Why give a playtime for it? Yeah, I call them out during playtime. And they're like, do you want to do playtime or like, do you want to do a new book? They're like, can we do the new book? I'm like, okay. So we do it during playtime, they take up out of playtime to do this.
To do this. The books are good and there's building, building success. The kids are successful. Every single kid that I have feels like a reader. They're making progress, they feel good about themselves. One of my favorite stories is a second grader who has really been struggling. She's gone down to the kindergarten room to read some of these books. And she goes in and she does the whole thing and she feels so proud of herself. Where at the beginning of the year, she, she didn't feel good. She came to school so unhappy. She's a reader.
And she imitates Ms. Pulsonella. She reads to the kindergarten, she says, what do you think this book is going to be about? And it's, and you and the red hat. And you and the red hat, oh, it might.
I didn't realize I said that that much.
And Ms. Pulsonella all together in the kindergarten. Now, the struggling reader is now captivating the kindergarten class.
It's, it's, it's really good. So, and with this, there's also built-in data management. So we're constantly, constantly assessing and seeing how the kids are doing. And then I can input it into the computer and we get all sorts of information. So this is just the Downing School information. These are the reading levels, A, B, O. A being the easiest.
And everybody has this chart too if you need to.
Sorry, when you touch it, it moves.
It moves, all right. A being the easiest, getting progressively harder up to level K. And you can see here, yeah, with the chart also, kind of our expectations for each grade level. By the end of kindergarten, like the A to level C, first grade a level I, second grade a level M. And down at the bottom, these are my individual students that I work with. So my four first graders I work with and my five second graders. And you see at the beginning of the year, they came in. Actually, a couple were below A, I mean, A was a struggle for them. I mean, they are moving, they're, they're, they're going towards that goal in ways that we've never seen this before. I know last year when I was working and doing kids' skills, I felt like they were making progress. I didn't really know. These kids are like well on their way to reaching their goals. So this, I, for me, this is, I mean, this really shows.
And all of those kids received their instruction from you?
Yes, these are all mine at Downing School. And every single one of these kids, if you were to say, you know, do you like reading? They like reading. They would say, I'm a reader. They feel like they're readers. So it's been really, really exciting. And I just picked up the kindergarten, so I don't have any kindergarten data yet. But I think that, and working with the teachers too, it's going to be so interesting to see. You know, we have a plan of how, how we're going to get them there. We want them there, we expect that. So this is just Downing School.
And this next one has a lot of data on it. This is eighteen weeks of RTI. The first six, A through F, are first graders that are not special education getting, receiving the LLI. The one SE is, the two, one SEs are two special education students that are receiving it. The twos with the letters without the SE are second graders. Right here, second graders, non-special ed students receiving the LLI. These are second graders in special education, receiving, making their progress. And the third graders, it's interesting because there's eight of them. And if you, they almost look like two groups because this group is well on their way. This group is not, these three. These are our most struggling readers entering fourth grade. We know that now, we can do something about it. And we know now we can do something tomorrow. And then we don't have to wait till next year. But this, this, this gives us a lot of really good information and.
And this is just our, just showing what our tier two looks like. That's that tier two, two times a week, pick thirty minutes intervention that does a lot with.
This is tier three.
This is the third grade.
Oh, sorry, I read the wrong thing. I'm sorry. This is, you know, Oregon, Read Naturally, quick instruction. This is with the Read Naturally, working on fluency alone. Okay? There's twenty-three kids that are working in this grouping. This is, you know, where they started, where they took off. The recommended reading fluency range is ninety to one hundred and twenty words per minute for this grade level for third grade. And this is where our students are compared to where the average is. So you see, some kids are ready to move out of this tier because they've met their goals and they're going to go back into the general education, not receive this service. And other kids that would maybe be identified would go into this, into this tier. And this is how we judge who has met their goals and who has not.
Which tier is this?
This is tier three. This is, but this isn't the LLI. The LLI was the first two slides. This is like the Read Naturally, there's some multi-sentary reading, like Orton Wilson type of instruction, phonemic awareness going on through this instructor. Because that's what they were targeted to need.
So how is RTI making a difference? The graph shows, you know, we're having fewer child study team referrals. Preventing reading failure. We're not just saying, okay, we think they have a problem, let's kind of help them a little bit. We're stopping the problem, we're helping them, we're making them readers. And this individualized leveling using that benchmark assessment system, that's helping all our strugglers, but it's helping everybody in the classroom too. I mean, when we walk in to do some coaching in the classrooms, the teachers have their kids in the right groups. And they're instructing, they're targeting their instruction for what those kids need. And it's evidence-based, we have, I mean, I can pull graphs and charts and I have the data to say, this is, you know, what the kid needs. This is what we're getting them. If it's not working, we're going to figure something else out. And that's, it allows for adjustment and monitoring. And we've had, with some students, we've had multiple meetings about, okay, we need to do this, we need to change some things, tweak some things. And we've been able to do that.
Just made some changes for just one student who needed something different. It was in a group of three and we pulled him now individually. He's going to get individual help and the other two will remain in the grouping that they were.
And I, I mean, and all these things are wonderful. As a reading teacher, the thing for me is that we're hitting more kids and we're really helping more kids. I feel lucky, I feel proud of the work that we're doing in this district and that I'm doing with my colleagues because we're making changes in these kids' lives. So it's huge. I think it's a huge step for the district and I think we.
And it's joyful for the children. You had to pick up the word to say, what's the one word? I mean, targeted, but joyful. It's a joyful way to teach and it's joyful to the children.
That's good. So kind of our future goals and expectations, what we're continuing to do for this year is we're continuing to take that data, place kids in the correct tier and cycle kids out. I just recently, it was so great and those kids were so proud of themselves. Two first graders and a second grader. I was able to cycle out, put three more new kids in. I have two second graders in the wings, I want to just give them a little bit more. They're almost ready to go. So we're definitely going to continue that. And I think also with our, just picking up the kindergarten, we have a lot of work to do there, trying to tweak that and figure out how we're going to make that work and be that, make that most effective based on all our data analysis.
And we want to continue RTI training and coaching for the staff because the ultimate is to have excellent programs and excellent teaching. It's the two together, that's the marriage, that's the marriage. And that's what you have to work for, that's your carrot.
And then future goals for, you know, the coming years, definitely we've, through, through all this, we've learned that kindergarten is a place where we need to put some extra focus. We don't want that gap to, to start at all, we want to keep that gap from ever growing. So there's a need, we've, we found that this year and I think we're kind of working on ways to, to do that. And our teachers have been working with us to, you know, kind of brainstorm and figure out what we need. And we talked about the Daily Five program and that's, that's a great program. We have a ton of teachers that have, you know, just jumped on board and said, this is fun, this is great. It allows kids to get what they need in the reading groups and it makes them more independent. And it's kind of a whole culture, structure for how reading should go. So we've been seeing a lot of really good things with that and we're hoping that it catches on more too.
Now, stop, just talking, Janet, what, again, what are the parts of the Daily Five?
The Daily Five is, it's a structured.
It's, it's a program. And, and last summer, Barbara got Nancy to buy books and everybody got books and everybody read them over the summer. And it was, it was, it was completely optional. But a lot of teachers jumped into it and it really took, it took them six weeks to get it going. And it's got five components, the Daily Five. Read to self, read to others, read, no, read to self, read to, read to someone else, another person.
Partner reading.
Listen to reading, word work and writing. And what happens is, and this has been the beauty of this, because I, I've been doing observations in these classrooms and the, the teachers all have center setups that are meaningful for the kids. But this, the whole philosophy behind this book, because I write it too, is that you learn to read by reading. And the more you read, the better reader you're going to be. So now that we have all the kids benchmarked, every kid involved in the Daily Five has a little bag of books with, with a whole stack of books in that bag on their level. And the teachers have to mix these up every couple of weeks. But they, every kid's got a bag of books on their level. And so when they go into the Daily Five, the teacher is working with a group. The teacher is sitting up in front of the room, working with a small group. The whole classroom is, you cannot imagine how silent, except for the ones reading to each other, and they're reading very quietly and appropriately and they don't only read, they, they have certain way, they have to sit, they have to sit elbow to elbow, elbow to elbow, need a medium, I mean, it's all spelled out. And they do it and they ask each other questions and they, like they ask the child to tell them what they got out of the book and did you like my book? Now I'm going to read you my book. And sometimes they are both reading on the same level and in that case, they can read out the same book. And if they're not, this one reads their book and this one reads their book.
It, it, they don't have to just be partnered with somebody on their level.
No.
So they listen and they, they have to do all these things too. They role-play what it looks like to be a good listener, what it looks like to be a good speaker, what it looks like to sit in a group. Do we play around? Do we do these things? And it's all very structured.
And what I have been amazed at is I have, I've been observing guided reading for years now and almost inevitably, there are children up at the desk wanting the teacher to tell them something, you know, or show them something or ask them, can I go to the bathroom? No. In a Daily Five room, the teacher is never bothered. I, I haven't seen, I mean, I've, I've observed quite a few teachers this year in where Daily Five is going on. And I have not seen one of those children go up to that teacher while that teacher is teaching. And yet everyone is engaged, everyone's engaged in, in one part of the Daily Five or another.
And you teach some stamina, like first day, you know, for kindergarten. You maybe work on a minute where everybody is reading for that minute and they might be looking through the pictures. The minute somebody's fooling around, that stops. It has to be a pure minute. In third grade, it was the fifth day of school and Downing School, there were kids already on fifteen minutes. Fifth day of school. They, the stamina was fifteen minutes and you could hear a pin drop. And we were doing the benchmark assessment and the Daily Five get-go from the first day of school.
And they, they tell them that they can, if they're reading to themselves or reading with a partner, they can sit anywhere they want. Like the teachers encourage them to read all different places. And there's one little special needs kid in second grade that Ms. Tumi was working with and he came in all happy because he said to her, I read my book in ten different places at my house. And his mother came up and said, oh my God, he was reading in the bathtub. But they, they really do pick it up. They love, for some reason, I don't know what the magic is, but they really do love. And that's why we would like to fully adopt the Daily Five.
Now, what is your timeframe for this Daily Five? It, it just depends on the, the personality of the class, the.
Well, right now, it's kind of volunteer.
No, do you mean when they're in the, when they're.
When they're within that Daily Five.
It's the whole time.
Language arts block.
The whole reading.
The language arts block, so it should be nine to eleven-thirty. Be nine to eleven, maybe a part in between.
And just from like the remedial standpoint, if there's, you know, a kid that needs a little help with something, that targeted instruction, I can say, okay, you know, but, you know, Bobby needs these books, he needs to work on the OW now, can you make sure I work, work, work?
Infiltrate that right into the Daily Five.
And it just goes.
Insert it in, double dose, target the instruction.
So I think, and we also need to keep, you know, we have all this data now. We want to keep looking at it, analyzing it, figuring out, you know, what are we doing? Is it working? Do we need to make some tweaks or make some changes? And, and, and for the future, we would like to have our, an RTI team that meets three or four times a year, principal, reading specialist, LDTC and the teacher who says, these kids that are in these tiers, let's look at our data. Is what we're doing working? Let's keep it up. If it's not working, what changes can we make? Or are they doing great? We're going to cycle them out and kind of make sure that we're having, you know, those conversations throughout the year so that we know that everybody's.
And those conversations might be maintained in tier two in other eight weeks. Move on to tier three, back to tier one, ooh, not working, let's, I mean, in my opinion, I would go to a tier four, tier five, before I would hit special education. I would want to be able to give every intervention that you could powerfully give to a child to read.
And I think possibly in the future, you know, we've been talking about extending it to the fourth and fifth grades and, and seeing where we can go with that. and, and seeing where we can go with that, especially seeing all the success that we've had so far. So-
That RTI and LLI equals results. That if there's anything you go away with, know that excellent evidence-based programs along with the excellent teaching, not one or the other. That's what gives you the results. That's the common, that's the formula.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the time. I'm very proud of the work that these folks have done, with a lot of their own personal time and energy into it. And, you know what, but there's nothing that succeeds like success, so it's a wonderful thing.
Thank you again to Ms. Epstein, Ms. Heinz, Ms. Pulsnell, and Ms. Gallagher for the presentation, and for all of your hard work on the here for Board of Education. Thank you very much. At this time, we are going to move along to public comment on agenda items. And I'm going to read this this evening, since our agenda is a little different. Public is reminded that they should attempt to resolve problems under complaints through initial contact with a safe member or members involved therein and the chief school administrator prior to petitioning the Board of Education. Complaints should only be brought to the Board after the appropriate school staff has a reasonable opportunity to resolve the problem at the employee level. Statements should be limited to topics to be addressed on the published agenda and limited to length of three minutes. The Board President will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to comment on any action item on this agenda. Please respect the following procedures. One, be recognized by the Board President. Two, state your full name and address. Three, identify the resolution, item number, in which you wish to comment. Four, wait to be recognized before you make your comment. Five, limit your comments to specific resolution and items. And six, limit your comments to three minutes per person. At this time, is there any public comments on agenda items? No? We will move along to the secretary's report.
Attached is my yellow sheet, but highlighted in the agenda are the items that I was working on since the last regular meeting, which includes the preliminary 2013-14 budget reimbursement with the IDEA money and expense so far for this fiscal week year, NCLP amendment, IDEA amendment, the quarterly Medicaid semi-report for the second quarter, also a new national provider identification number application that's related to the semi-program SAM registration, and also working with achieving a, a new PA and bell system for old school, and also the CUSAC follow-up with the county coming out in this past month to do their fiscal accountability portion of their CUSAC examination.
Any additional comments, questions for secretary's report? Superintendent's report?
The enrollment is, remains virtually the same at eight hundred and seventy students. The Executive County Superintendent, Business Administrator, Ed Specialist, Child Safety, all the folks from the county office came out and visited us on February eleventh. You can see in, in that paragraph that they were very impressed by the things that they saw in our classrooms. They highlighted certain things, technology integration, Special Education and General Education writing across the curriculum. They would like to see, what they're basically saying to every school district in order to follow the Common Core State Standards is to bump up your rigor. I think that some of the things that you saw tonight are evidence of, of additional rigor. They were impressed with, with just about everything that they saw. Instruction and program in general, school operations, we, we must continue to work on the 21st century curriculum. And that is, was a CUSAC recommendation. And they would like a, a few other things, a little more articulation, so time where teachers can work together, and administrators providing more specific feedback. There were a few business practices that they wanted to see tightened up a bit. One of them is to revise the board agenda, and you've got that revised agenda tonight. Coding the attachments, another thing that you saw. Our District Professional Development Day on February fifteenth entitled, Get Into the Core of the Common Core State Standards. Rob Bungo and I presented. The teachers found it to be very valuable. Some feedback that we got really is helping teachers to understand what the shift to the Common Core Standards means, and what it's going to mean relative to the teacher evaluation system. There was one incident of HIV reported in Mary Bowles.
So, at this time, we need to approve the HIV report from January. So, I need a motion to approve la, uh, last month's paper report. Motion made by Maria.
Second.
Seconded by Patty Adair. Roll call.
I have a question.
Yes?
On this report and your summation of actions, I noticed that the victim, there's, there was no conference with the parent. So, perpetrator's yes.
Hi.
It's on the back of the bone conference paper. It doesn't say, it says nothing. There's no intervention listed for the victim of the-
This is attachment X dot two.
No, this is on the back of the superintendent's report.
Okay, that's not what we're, that's not January. That's not what we're approving.
You're approving, you're approving the January where there's action plan, monitor student, monitor all of the students' activity tracks.
X dot two.
Okay. This doesn't have a, no.
It's a separate one. It's as a whole. What happens is, I inform you in the month that it happens, and then the following month is the month that you approve it.
Okay, I just had a question on your report. I'm sorry. That was my fault. Wrong thing. I was asking a question. That's all. I was just wondering if there was a conference with the parent of this victim.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
The intervention says conference with parent. Sorry. When he's missing it.
See, it doesn't say, yeah, victim. It doesn't say anything here.
Oh, no, it, it was, it's meant to be, it's meant to be overall.
Okay, okay. All right. I was just concerned. That's all. All right. Thank you.
There's always some, just for the guidelines you have to follow, there always has to be a conference.
Oh, I'm assuming there was, but it's just not listed here, and I thought, was there any?
Actually, there's a three or four conference.
Right.
Sure. That, that probably missed a line based, missed a line based on the copy paste of having you give you-
I'm just taking two of my students. That's all. I want to make sure that things are happening. Okay, thank you.
Yes, you can trust us.
I know.
So, roll call for attachment X dot two.
Sorry.
It's okay, no problem.
Patricia Dare?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Charillo?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
I need a motion to table the adoption of the 2013-2014 calendar until next, uh, next, possibly next meeting, or when I'm just getting it. Motion made by John, seconded by Maria. Roll call.
Patricia Dare?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Charillo?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Under the, I need a motion to adopt the 2012-2013 goals with the action plan, attachment X dot four.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Patty Smith.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lynn Charillo. And we review this in the work session. Any additional questions? Roll call.
Patricia Dare?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Charillo?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
We all reviewed the principal's report, the nurses' report, fire and security drills. This one, A. Okay. I need a motion to accept item A, the fire and security drills, to D.
I make a motion.
Motion made by Maria.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. This was something that we, we had to start doing. Okay, so. Roll call.
Patricia Dare?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Charillo?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
The nurses' report, building and grounds' report, and special education report are attached. We review them also in the work session. At this time, is there any update for the PTA?
Uh, yes, we had our mother-daughter dinner last week. It was very successful. Two hundred and fourteen people attended. We served them a full dinner in here. What we did is broke them into groups by number, by color tickets as they came in. Fifty at a time came in here. We wrote, then we had in the all-purpose room dancing, and they had a board to write a message to their mom. And we had desserts and snacks in there for them. They were all dressed, and there was a play set up for them, that they wanted to take their own picture. So, that left that for them. They want a picture for their friends. And very, very successful. On the fifteenth of March, we're having Father-Son, and we have Mr. Ian Uche, Mr. Clancy, Mr. T. Doing some games and relay races in the back. And then, we've gotten donations from Home Depot of their little Saturday kits they usually do with the kids to do some kind of little building kit in here. It'll be a mix-up of things for them in here. And then, we're going to feed them. We're trying to figure out what to feed them. Because we had a dad come to pick up the family and said, full-course meal. Last year, I got a little few little snacks. But he was kidding us, you know, but we're trying to think of something fun to serve them, you know, because they'll be busy running, and, you know, it's a whole different type of thing for them. So, I think these are going over very well. We looked at a lot of things. We're talking costly, but they deserve it. It, we feel that it gave, like, the families time. Maybe they shop for dresses, some of them. They got to spend time with their moms. They got to, I mean, we spend money on a Saturday at night and have twelve people show up. So, the money that we put into this is really worthwhile for families to get a family night together. And that's what we're about, trying to get those families to stop the craziness you're doing, come in, spend time together, and hang out. And so, we, we think they're very, very successful. We're moving on with our baskets. We've sent out the first letters, three hundred letters, as I said, I think, before. And now, we sent a letter home to parents just if they had empty baskets, and some things that you want to send in that maybe, you know, gifts you got that you don't need, or you're cleaning house and find some things that, send them in. We already have things. We're starting to put baskets together.
What's it doing at that, Mrs. Wilson, is April twenty-sixth?
We are sending the email out, I believe, Monday to all of our teachers with a list, pick what you want, you know, out of the themes and ideas, and then that'll go home, and we'll try and get them. I, I mean, our teachers came through the classrooms, and families, they're just phenomenal. So, we had a fifteen-hundred-dollar Visa gift card this year for a raffle, for a five-dollar ticket, or a book of five for twenty. A lot of people, the Vegas trip wasn't what they wanted. When we did the TV, everybody had the TV, so we thought everybody could use the cash. So, we figured this is something that, you know, you can go and buy what you want. You can go out for a little vacation. You use it down the shore. You can do, use it for something that you want to do for your family. Maybe you need it for your bills, I suppose. Who knows? But families could really use that, and that's something they could use for anything. So, we changed that over this year, and basically, we hope that's our success. We're down to, we had how much in there? Twenty-some thousand. We're down to two thousand dollars in our bank account, because we're spending it on the kids, the schools, and what we should be spending on. So, we got a lot of class trips paid for this year, so.
Bring your baskets. Bring your baskets, please.
Camden County Educational Services Commission, I don't believe there was a, anything.
That's all. Got a letter welcoming.
Awesome. New Jersey, New Jersey-
Just wanted to tell you.
Association.
I just have a C.A. report. This year, the New Jersey Department of Education will be unveiling a makeover of the school report card. They will be changing the name, the school performance report. Some of the information from the old report will stay the same, such as student assessment data, student scores on SATs, and advanced placement testing, went through school days, and enrollment data, including student demographics and language diversity. The new report will also focus on factors aligned with college and career readiness. It will track students taking algebra long class in middle school with a C or higher average. The study shows that this is a good indication that these children are ready for college and a career. It will also track chronic absenteeism, for studies, for studies show that students are more likely not to be ready for college or career. It also measures the student growth and compare percentages of students in college from a four-year high school plan, as well as students in a five-year high school plan. In addition, it'll group peer schools together with demographic ideas, I'm sorry, demographic data. And these groups will be placed, will be placed the already existing district factor groups, which will be determined yearly from the reports. And it also has some upcoming events. March second is the Board and Student Achievement. That is at the Wyndham Princeton Forestal Hotel and Cockatrice Room in Plainsboro. That's from nine to two forty-five. March fourth, Camden County Eighth Grade Dialogue, registration and dessert reception at six. Program at six forty-five at Clementon Elementary School. March fifth, Burlington County's Eighth Grade Dialogue, in case you can't make it to Camden County. Where you want to go and see what the kids of Burlington County are doing versus the Camden County. That will be at the Institute of Technology West Hampton Campus. And March eighth through tenth is the NJSPA mandatory attorney governance one weekend orientation. Registration starts at five. Program starts at seven at the Princeton, Marriott, and Forestal. That is my report. Thank you.
Black Horse Pike?
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll update that. There's been a lot of positive basketball played off on first home basketball games since, playoff games since nineteen eighty-one. We won. The gym was packed. It was incredible. The boys really came out on fire. A few of those boys are run-me boys, by the way. And, uh-
As is the coach, isn't it?
As is-
Couple of coaches.
Both of the coaches, yes, for alumni. And also wrestlers are, throughout the whole district are down this evening wrestling for region. So, Triton had three stu, three students get, make it to region, and Highland and Timber Creek had many, many. And so, there's just been a lot of students that are preparing for proms, and, you know, spring sports start on, on Friday, and, yes, we will be together. And just looking forward to some nice weather.
One of the law. And we made all of our factors-
All of our, more importantly-
More importantly.
We made all of our indicators at Triton High School. Performance targets. So, we're absolutely excited about that, all that hard work. Uh, we have shore negotiations update?
Um, our negotiations team met this evening prior to our work session. We briefly went over the current contract and discussed some possible language changes. And I will talk to Mrs. Homel after our meeting tonight to fix a meeting for the next meeting with the RDA. And it was positive, and I'm hoping that it will be a positive experience for, for us all, so.
Thank you. So, with that, we will move along to property and transportation. And at this time, I need a motion to approve items number one, facility use, two, field trips, and three, transportation quotes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items number one, two, and three. I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Naomi, seconded by Patty Smith. Any questions? Roll call.
Patricia Dare?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Uh, either staying from number one, and yes, for, yes, for number two and three.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Charillo?
Yes.
And John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a nice, uh, motion to approve items number one through six under personnel.
I'd like to make a motion to approve numbers one through six under personnel.
Motion made by Naomi.
Second.
Seconded by Maria. Any questions? Roll call.
Patricia Dare?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Charillo?
Yes.
And John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, the Board would like to publicly thank Ms. Janet Field for all of your dedication and all of your- Under finance, I need a motion to approve, uh, item number one through five. Yes.
Who hires for Ms. Field's position? In other words, is it something that's done by the superintendent, something that's done by the principals? Who is responsible for that position? The hiring of-
Well, it, there's a committee that's for, that's formed to do a certain stage of interviews, but the superintendent is the ultimate follow-up.
That's a lot with that, Mr. Uh, I'm saying those are some pretty big shoes to follow in the bill.
Very, very big.
How many years in the, in the district?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two years.
Wow. The shoes are getting bigger.
You know, when you have, you have a person in Janet's position for so many years, sometimes you don't know really what you have. I, I think everybody here does know.
Yeah.
But I have to say that I've never worked with a financial psychologist or board member in Janet Field.
Amazing.
That's amazing.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you to the support of the Board for all these years.
As a parent, you might have saw-
Oh, yeah.
Dante's throat.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items number one through five under finance.
Thank you, Naomi. Motion made by Naomi.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Patty Adair. Any questions? Roll call.
Patricia Adair?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Chirillo?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So we will have that paging bell system installed over spring break?
Uh, I will say that's. But I also think the county is.
Oh, you, you, yeah, 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 yeah.
Official program as well.
Yes, you said that earlier.
Yes, on the.
I apologize.
Yes, I'm sorry. That's odd. I'm just excited.
There's many, there's many wonderful things happening, we're just excited. Under curriculum, I need a motion to approve item number one.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Lynn.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Roll call.
Patricia Adair?
Yes.
Angel Bebe?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Chirillo?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, there's nothing for approval under policy and public relations. So we will move to public comment on non-agenda items. The public is reminded that, that they should attempt to resolve problems and/or complaints through initial contact with a staff member or members involved therein and the chief school administrator prior to petitioning the Board of Education. Complaints should only be brought to the board after the appropriate school staff has had a reasonable opportunity to resolve the problem at the employee level. Statements should be limited in length to three minutes. The public is reminded that all public complaints against, against a district employee must be made through a specific grievance process. A description of this process may be found in Board of Ed Policy File Code zero one six seven. This policy is available upon request in the Office of the Board Secretary. Any individual naming an employee in a complaint before the Board of Education without the employee's permission could be cited for violating that employee's civil and contractual rights. This time, is there any public comment? Mrs. Wilson.
When will you be approving your budget for next year?
Mar- Mar- March sixth, excuse me, we're going to have a special meeting on March sixth.
That's approved, the submission to the state, to the county and the state. The public hearing won't be till March twenty-seventh.
Right, right, so by then you'll know what you're, if you're doing two percent or where you're going.
Final numbers, because we don't have our state aid numbers yet.
Right. I just wasn't sure.
Supposedly, yeah, what time, I don't know.
Um, I'm sorry, the ladies left because that was a great presentation. And I hear a lot of good things. I was just wondering if, do you know the number, Nancy, of how many students are?
Servicing?
Servicing, like Jenna, because it sounds to me like we need another.
Another Jenna.
Another Jenna, you know, because they're moving forward. And then I guess the other thing is in the math, then you need a person to do math. We have one person for math, but that's one person for two schools, K to three. So we can't get more than two days a week for pull-out for, for any math student. I mean, on this, this is such an intense program, like how many students does she?
How many does she have?
Jenna doesn't have hardly, hardly large numbers because she, she works with the intense, because she has to work with them five days a week. So like the tier two can only get two days a week because the tier two teacher, which is Mrs. Lyle, pulls from every classroom, a group from every classroom. But Jenna pulls one group from the two first grades at Bingham, one group from the two second grades at Bingham, and the same at Downing. Pat DiGiulio does third grade tiers two and three. She pulls the tier threes three times a week for forty-five minutes and she pulls the tier twos two times a week.
It's like, it's, it was, so when you look at the Downing School Tier Three, those are Jenna's students, right?
No, well, yes, as long as they're not in third grade, yes. The tier threes in one and two are Jenna's students.
The one on the slide, those nine students are all Jenna's.
Right.
So there's four in first grade and five in second grade, just at Downing.
Right. Just on tier three.
Just on tier.
Three. Yeah, tier three. She works, Jenna works exclusively with tier three. And she's just started to work with kindergarten as well. The first part of the year, she used those kindergarten slots for training. And because we knew we weren't going to level, we couldn't really level kindergartners till they began to do some reading. So we leveled them in January and now she's picked up LLI groups of kindergarten. She already trained.
But we, we've had some discussion about staffing assignments for next year relative to making sure that this program not only stays what it is, but also can be enhanced. And so we've talked about different ways of allocating our existing staff even. So we, we identify that we need more time for intermission, certainly more time for math, and that, those are some considerations.
And the five thing that they're doing, which sounds really.
Daily five.
That's only volunteer teachers this year.
This year.
How many do you have volunteer? I believe all the third grades picked it up. And I think both second grades at Bingham and one second grade at Downing. And a couple first grades have picked up pieces of it, but not, they haven't totally adopted it. Why is that among, I'm just saying. Well, only because it was, because it was something there.
It was, it was new, it was part of its initial year. And I think when we spoke at, at February fifteenth Professional Development Day, I indicated, while it can't be my call because I won't still be here, but that it would become i-pip goal for the entire district. So that, or for, for the appropriate grade levels, I should say. Um, and, and certainly encourage teachers to understand why, because it, it also is a benefit to the teacher evaluation system. Because it is, because children become more independent and help and work with each other. So teachers are evaluated at a higher level if they're incorporating these kinds of practices in their classrooms.
And the other thing is, I think there'd have to be a little bit of help for the, the teachers of the younger children to figure out how to really, even Barbara said that, like I think she said there's a special book for kindergarten.
They would need some special training for it.
We would need to get those books and see what, because you can't do it the same way, because they couldn't possibly sustain reading, because some of them aren't even reading.
But the goal is to certainly keep Barbara Stein on board for next year. She loves working in this district and this district loves working with her. So she could continue to help move the program forward. The goal is always to train teachers to be able to take on those responsibilities themselves with minimal coaching. And then new initiatives are supported with more intense coaching.
And then the other thing I'd like to mention too, that, um, the LLI is little by little being adopted by classroom teachers. Like all the special ed teachers at Bingham are using it now. And not kindergarten, but all the, yes, even kindergarten, all the, all the special ed teachers are using it. And some of the regular ed teachers are picking it up. So that will be great for, maybe not that lowest of the low who need somebody that's a reading specialist to really intervene, but other low children who will benefit from that program. So it is kind of becoming contagious and catching on.
Making a difference. And when sometimes when certain things grow organically, they are, teachers take to them better. Because they recognize something that they want rather than something that somebody forced them to do. So we're very fortunate that our teachers are very attracted to students being successful and them being able to make a difference in their children's lives.
Any other questions? Mrs. Roots?
Is there any other, um, schools in the district, Ms. Gallagher, doing this program?
In the district?
No, not in this district, in the area, any other school districts?
Uh, I'm sure there are, I don't, I don't know which ones. We got it more through that workshop that we sent the teachers to this summer. Uh, I, I'm positive that there are other schools probably using it. It's very, you know, it's interesting.
They do.
It's very similar to, um, we used to have reading recovery. And the teachers that taught reading recovery were basically using the same approach to children, but they only worked with one child. Whereas I think a lot of districts have had to get rid of reading recovery because nobody could afford to keep teachers to work with one child. Uh, like I think they worked with four in a semester, you know, and so they've taken that program and made it so that you can work with a group. And that's really what the LLI is coming out of.
Also, I had a question about the paging system. What, can you just give me like the bullet points on that of what that is, the new, the new system?
Uh, I don't have the specs with me, but the reason why we had to do that was because our current session, our, our current system is. The PA. Yeah, the PA and bell system is old and it's sporadically not working and.
There's one room that somebody could just.
You could tell us.
And we just thought that there's a safety issue if something happens and the PA system isn't, isn't working.
It's a, it's a security issue, right?
So. And it's no longer, the age of it means it's no longer supported by any outside vendor to service it. So we have really put it together with inside expertise, calling people in, and it's, it's beyond repair. For safety purposes.
And two in the Bingham and Downing will replace ours.
Yeah.
Right.
Go ahead.
So we just thought it was imperative because of security.
Okay.
Any other questions, public comments? All right, at this time, we will be going into executive session. Whereas while the seminar firing and mayor of the Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash twelve, requires all meetings of the Runway School District Board of Education to be held in public, NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B sets forth nine types of matters that may lawfully be discussed in executive session without the public being permitted to attend. Whereas the Runway Public School District Board of Education has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain matters which are exempted from the public. And whereas the nine exceptions to public meetings set forth in NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B are listed below and next to each exception is a box within which of the number of issues to be privately discussed that fall within that exception shall be written. And after each exception is a space where additional information that will disclose as much information about the decision as possible without undermining the purpose of the exemption shall be written. Now therefore, may resolve that the Runway Public School District Board of Education will go into closed session for the following reasons as outlined in NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B. Any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation which the public body is or may become a party. Any matters falling within the attorney-client privilege, excuse me, to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise his ethical duties as a lawyer. More specifically, we will be going into closed session this, this evening to discuss Runway Board of Education versus Alessi Ruth B. Whereas the length of executive session is undetermined, however, the Runway Public School District Board of Education will make every attempt to estimate the time of the session prior to convening the session, after which the public meeting shall reconvene at eight forty-five PM. And the Runway Public School District Board of Education will proceed with business, although we don't anticipate any action items at that time. Now therefore, may resolve that the Runway Public School District Board of Education will go into executive session for only the above stated reasons. May further resolve that the Runway Public School District Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects may be made public at a time when the Runway Public School District Board of Education Attorney advises that the disclosure of the discussion will not detrimentally affect any right, interest, or duty of the school district or any other entity with respect to the said discussion. May further resolve that the Runway Public School District Board of Education for the aforementioned reasons hereby declares that the public is excluded from the portion of the meeting during which the above discussions shall take place and hereby directs the Board Secretary to take the appropriate action to effectuate the terms of this resolution. May further resolve that the Board Secretary, on the next business day following this meeting, shall furnish a copy of this resolution to any member of the public who requests one at the fees allowed by NJSA forty-seven colon one A dash one.
Excuse me? And you've already spoken to the last second staff. The county VA asked us to put that in there.